Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 3 regular city council meeting. And if any of you had a doubt that March winds will come, they're here. It's been windy, so. And so would you call roll today?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
And I'd ask Alicia Swearingen to come up from the Royal Gorge Vineyard, who please rise for the invocation.
From Psalm 145, "Every day I will praise you and extol your name forever and ever. Great is the Lord and most worthy of praise; his greatness no one can fathom." And so, Lord, we just acknowledge you and your presence and your goodness and your love for this community of Canyon City, and we just invite you as we seek a way forward for the betterment of our community, and we bless everyone who serves here. You protect them and protect their families and be with them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
By pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have opening for citizens' requests to speak to council. I have two. We asked Jim Fulton.
Felton.
Felton, I'm sorry, we did shake hands, but come on up, Jim, to the microphone and those little lights. You have three minutes. They're green, yellow, and red, and go right, go right ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Jim Felton. I'm here representing the Miners Ridge Property Owners Association. The POA is located just off the end of the paved portion of Foothills Drive, and has evolved into council's proposal to put in an access point for the hogback rec area. The POA found out about the council's effort back by word of mouth in August of 2024. After finding out about the effort, I sent a letter dated August 9, 2024, to Mayor Troutman. The letter contained the POA's concerns and the fact that the effort contradicted the rights of the city contained in the signed agreement between Miners Ridge POA developers and the city. The agreement is recorded in Fremont County property records, February 2, 2005, regarding Lot 186. I didn't receive any response to that letter. After a series of communications with Mr. Evans from Public Works Department, an onsite meeting was held on February 6, 2025, with Mr. Evans, Mr. Brady from Parks Department, Councilmember Stein, and approximately 15 residents from the immediate area. During the meeting, several points of view were voiced regarding the entrance or the proposed entrance, for and against the project. Mr. Evans took a straw poll of the residents who were there, and of the poll, three votes were cast for the project. After the vote was taken, Mr. Evans indicated the project would not be moved forward, but Councilmember Stein indicated that the matter would be referred to legal counsel. That was the last contact that we had from any of the city representatives. Knowing that it's more than likely that neither Mr. Evans nor Councilmember Stein had the authority to proceed or kill the project, the Miners Ridge Property Owners Association would like to know the official status of the project, and we would also like to know what the legal counsel for the city thought of the Lot 186 recording. The POA also feels that the area residents that were covered in the earlier project notifications should be notified of the final results from the council.
Thank you.
Mr. Felton, I was there, and I told you this was not an official counsel thing. It was a neighborhood thing because they have been limited to access to walk back there. The 186 that you're talking about is that wedge of land that's above the, what would have been around about if that had been a trailhead? That hasn't changed. There's no reason to turn this over to our attorneys.
Yeah, but you said you were going to refer to legal counsel.
I did not. I said if they didn't, if they did not, if they, if all of the paperwork you had didn't, wasn't the same, but it was. Leo went back and Mr. Evans checked it. Everything you have is the same thing that the city has. There's nothing different, and because it was a neighborhood decision, it's over. There's no, I mean, it's over. I don't know what you, you know, I'm sorry if you misunderstood, but there's nothing else that's going to happen with this. Thank you.
So legal counsel advised you against it?
I did not go to legal counsel.
You said you were going to.
I did not say that.
You said it twice.
Do you have a recording of what I said?
I don't have a recording, but I have.
No, you don't, so please quit saying it. I did not, no. I said we would run those papers, all the paperwork that people had, and Mr. Evans had them, and Mr. Evans got back to me and he copied to you, that there was no, there was nothing different that had to be changed. Everything stays the way it is, and the 186 lot is the same as it's always been. It's your access, your legal access, above that roundabout, which would have been there if it was open as a trailhead. That's it. There's, there's no, nothing dark and secret and something else happening here. It's over. Thank you.
Questions? You have a question?
So, well, the question is, where does the council stand on this?
I would have to review it. Usually when I get things like that, I refer it to our engineer, and that could have happened. I get lots of emails.
Okay, because I contacted Ms. Owens a couple of weeks ago, and she said that the matter was tabled, correct?
I passed it on to my administrator, because I didn't have any clue, so I passed it on to the boss.
All right. So the city council has no opinion on this?
Does the city? Go ahead.
This has not come before council. It's not a council matter.
Right, but all this.
Staff matter.
All this work that was done by Mr. Evans beforehand, okay, I'm going to have to say somebody told him to do this, to put out the notices to the local residents saying that this is our proposal? Where did that come from?
That came, yes, from the neighborhood. There are people in the neighborhood who used to be able to access the trail and go up there.
Well, I understand that, but that was years ago. We're talking 20 years ago.
Not 20, I'd say more like.
The document that we're talking about for 186 was recorded in 2005, so that's when we got permission to use that piece of property as our entrance to the development. So that's how far back this goes.
If I could, if I could, sir, I think the appropriate thing to do, our city administrator is out ill tonight, but he is the appropriate person to be talking to. If you have questions or issues, he's, he's an appropriate first contact to raise whatever questions or issues you have, and he should be able to provide you with answers to any questions that you have.
This is in regards to Mr. Evans's activities?
He's Mr. Evans' boss.
Okay.
So our city administrator, yes.
Okay.
That's, that's a normal, that's, that's the normal route for questions like this, if there's issues or something.
Well, I just thought since, you know, this was started and, you know, Councilmember Stein was the one that was, you know, spearheading this apparently, that it came from the city council?
No, sir, but see, please, when, he'll probably, he might be out for another day or two, I'm not sure.
Okay, no problem.
But, but, but please be in contact with him. His, his contact information is on our website, and he's very accessible.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve DiOrio, come on down.
Hi, my name's Steve DiOrio, and I'm bringing up the flooding out there on Four Mile Lane. You guys are trying to subdivide right across the road from us, and I have pictures of Mr. Bowie's house that gets flooded every year from all the water that comes off the east side of Four Mile onto our property, and I was just wondering what these guys are going to do about the flooding that goes on out there every year? Because it'll come all the way from the other side and come around through those, through that one draw where they're going to put a subdivision in.
Has it continued?
This has been going on since I've lived out there 32 years, and it just keeps getting worse and worse every year. Mr. Bowie's brought it up to the city people, and they've just given him the runaround.
Well, it didn't come up to us, so. Okay, we'll talk to Leo, and the Four Mile people will be talking as well, so if you'd like to stay for that.
Well, I'd, I'd like to know what, what, what can we, what can we do about it?
I don't know, I don't know where it's coming from. I don't, I'd have to have more information.
Well, did you want to see the pictures that we got of the flooding that happens out there?
Did you?
Do you have them on picture or do you?
It's on my phone, and Mike's got some too.
Can you give me my card and have you email it to me, and I will send it out to the council?
I think I've got your card.
Okay, because that way I can move it off to them at the same time, and they can look at you instead of trying to pass your phone around.
Okay, and I was just wondering, when is all this developing going to start out there?
Well, we have to approve or review the plat tonight, and then from there, it would be up to, I guess Patrick could answer that, if you can, Patrick?
So we're not approving a plat this evening? This is a zoning matter that's before you. Following, if, if the zoning is approved, the next stage would be some sort of a minor subdivision to create legal parcels of record for internal land use areas that would then get sold off to end developers. There would also be a concurrent master development agreement that would specify the public improvements and the triggers for those. It would depend upon how quickly the applicant wants to move, but if council approves the zoning tonight, we could potentially have a minor subdivision and a master development agreement done before the end of the year.
Okay, does that, what he's talking about, does that fall under stormwater?
It would be, it would be stormwater, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It just seems like it would be better to have this discussion since there's going to be a public hearing on Item 9A in regard to the planned development. Seems like that whether it's pictures or testimony or whatever, it should come in the context of that public hearing.
Okay. Would it be all right?
Yeah, as long as, as long as you can let us know when it, when you're going to have it.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Okay, does any of the council members have any announcements or board updates or anything? For some reason, my deal isn't working, so go ahead.
My light's on continuously, so I'm happy to just keep talking. But I do have a couple of things I'd like to mention.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Just real briefly, I wanted to be sure that council and the community know that the city of Pueblo is taking some action in regard to Black Hills Energy. What I know of, which is just public information, is that the city council in Pueblo is going to have an issue on the ballot in May, at a special election in early May, regarding asking folks in Pueblo if they want to take an so-called off-ramp from their existing franchise with Black Hills Energy. They're at that point this year where they could take an off-ramp if people want to do that, but at the same time, they've also hired a consultant, the city has, in Pueblo has hired a consultant to do a feasibility study, which, as I understand it, is going to look at various options, which might range from Pueblo considering municipalizing if the voters approve, or perhaps doing something regional, or maybe in the whole service territory. So I just wanted folks to be aware of that and also be aware that the rate case, the Black Hills rate case with the Public Utilities Commission, we're expecting a decision from the PUC really at any time, I think. I would expect in the next several weeks, but I don't know exactly when that'll come. But I just wanted folks to be aware that there are things happening, and I hope that at least at the city staff level that we make a connection with the mayor of Pueblo, who is, they have a strong mayor form of government, so the mayor of Pueblo serves as their city manager. So I hope from our city administrator to their mayor that we can have some ongoing communication about what the city of council there has in mind. And on a different subject, I wanted to mention too that a real good resource, I get a lot of questions about the Cotter Uranium Mill site, the Superfund site that we've had for, well, it's been a Superfund site for nearly 41 years. A really good local resource is a nonprofit called Colorado Citizens Against Toxic Waste, and that group, that nonprofit's been in existence for over 22 years. They had a display at the museum for about a year, and then it was taken down, just regular rotation of exhibits there, but there was a very good video done narrated by Jerry Frye that's on the CCAT, Colorado Citizens Against Toxic Waste, website. It's about a 45-minute video explaining what was in that display before it was taken down and providing a lot of information about the history of the site. Their website is CCAT.org, if you're interested in taking a look at that. That's all.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else have any, any council members? John, go ahead.
Thank you. The, we did have the Combined Regional Communication Authority meeting, which is the, the intergovernmental group between the county, Canyon City, Florence, and various fire departments and emergency medical services. But in that meeting, there was an award given to one of the dispatchers. She had a person call in, an emergency call came in for a person that was not breathing. She was able to use their protocols to successfully direct the people on the scene to treat that person, and so the, because of that and because the person survived, she received the, a life-saving award from the, from the 911 center. And I just wanted to pass on too that last month, there were more than 1,600 calls for service to the 911 calls to the center, and that's, that's quite a few calls, and if the police did nothing but respond to those calls, there's very, there's no time left over for other activities. I'd just like to point that out at our current staffing levels, and we hope that, that those are changing and that we're going to be getting to a full complement of sworn officers. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Amy?
Thanks. I just wanted to mention that the annual Star Point CCPD basketball game is March 14 at the high school, and I hope that we have another great turnout this year. It's always a wonderful time to see our police officers go up against some of the Star Point consumers. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then Wednesday, we have our URA, Urban Renewal Authority, meeting here at 5 o'clock. Am I correct? Okay. That's fallen silent. I'd ask then for our stand-in, Tammy Administrator, to go over the consent agenda, please.
Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting, February 17, 2025, and the Vision Committee meeting, February 19, 2025. 7B authorizes the city administrator to sign the Express Bill Pay Gateway Services Master Agreement. Item 7C is to award bid 30-25 for the emergency HVAC repair at the police department. Item 7D is to receive and file cash dispersments, and it's a ratification from February 25th, and then to receive and file the cash dispersments from February 18 through March 3, 2025. And that is the end of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Any questions of Tammy on anything? Amy?
Thanks. I have a number of questions on 7B regarding the switch in our bill pay system for our water enterprise fund, if that's all right?
Yes.
Wonderful. So could you talk a little bit about what impact this change would have on the city's costs? I understand that costs related to the credit cards would be passed on to the end users, and I do have some questions about that as well, but I also just want to understand, regardless of taking out the credit card costs, there are a number of costs that this service will charge the city, and I'd like to understand, is it cost neutral with our current service, or is it a cost increase or decrease?
Okay, so overall, with the switch of the city paying the credit card user fees right now, we pay over, I think it's like $70,000 or so a year, so it's a significant cost to the city. We should be able to reduce our costs by about $50,000 just in credit card processing fees. This applies to anybody who is making their water bill payment using a debit or credit card, and if they have signed, whether it's in person or if they've signed up through the website for automatic payments to be charged to those accounts. We currently offer a pay-by-phone system. We do pay for that, whether it is, so we have costs from our current billing system, which is ADG, and then we also have transaction fees that are charged on those payments through our current credit card processor. On that one, in 2024, we paid about $12,000 to the existing processor. With the switch to the new processor, we'd be looking about $9,000, and so there would be a savings for the pay-by-phone system. That also, we'd also eliminate, I think it's about a $1,500 fee from our existing, from ADG for the IVR, which we will no longer have to have that. So that, that, that one is going to be, you know, it's going to save the city a little bit of funds for us to have the IVR through the express bill pay system.
Sure. There are just a number of other products that are charged to the city, the annual forms builder, builder fee, the express forms builder fee, the annual lockbox maintenance. So what I'm really looking for is like the overall, is this cost neutral? Is there a cost increase, a cost decrease?
We're, we are looking in the, in the fees to actually save some funds. I can't say exactly how much we're going to save, but we did look at our existing lockbox fees as well, because that is a separate provider. So right now, we have our credit card provider, which is one vendor. We have our lockbox provider, which is another vendor, and so we're going to consolidate it all into one vendor, which will be the express bill pay. Looking at the lockbox fees, it actually costs us less to go with express bill pay than to stay with our current provider.
So overall, you're expecting that this will be a cost decrease?
Yes.
Okay, great. My other questions related to the costs that will be passed on to our consumers with when this change would go into effect, how they will be notified about the change, because I would imagine a high percentage of folks do use credit or debit cards, so I want to make sure that we're giving them enough notice and making sure that they all know in advance so that they know how to switch before the next bill hits.
Right.
So could you talk us through the timeline and how we'll get those notifications out?
Yes, so we are still working to get our new utility billing service up and going through Springbrook. We are anticipating to be live at the end of March, but with that being said, we will, we should still send our bills out from ADG and run parallel with Springbrook. And then the payments, we will transition over. I'm guessing that we're going to switch, it's going to depend on how soon express bill pay can get our portals built, and so we still may have to have Point and Pay as our provider for the next month. We are going to be working with our PIO to get information out on social media regarding the change, and then also we will provide information to our customers as they are coming into, into City Hall. We may also, I'll have to see about timing, we may be able to get a flyer in our March statement. And so that timing is, it's going to be really, it's going to be really, really tight when that's, when that's going to happen. And part of it is just depending on when all of these other things fall, fall into place. We've made sure that our contract with the express bill pay did get approval through the attorneys before we even approached city council on this. So we've had, we've had the contract, working through it and getting everything good for, you know, a month or so. We've been trying to get it, get it through. We had talked at the time of a switching our, our software, that we were looking to redirect the credit card fees to the user, because the way it is right now, everybody ends up paying a portion of those credit card fees because it's built into the rates. So by actually charging that fee or passing along the fee that we're charged directly to the consumer, it's, it's that, the people that are using it are the ones who are going to be paying for, for that fee.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure that we are informing all of our users before that 3% additional fee hits them as to how they can change their billing process or payment processes so that they are not paying it. And I think what I hear you saying is that we'll put some stuff on social media, and if somebody comes in to pay their water bill, that we would tell them how, but I don't, I don't think that I think.
They pay in person using their credit card as well?
Sure, but, but the vast majority of people don't come into City Hall to pay their water bill, and a lot of people aren't on social media, so I don't, I don't know that I think that that's sufficient. I think I would want everybody who gets a water bill to get that flyer that says, here's how you should change in order to avoid this 3% fee. I don't want folks to be hit with a fee that they don't even know about. So even if that does mean delaying the express script, or express bill pay for another month, I think it's worth it to make sure that folks have that knowledge and have the ability to, to make that change.
Yeah, and like I said, we're, we're still working through how soon that's actually going to be implemented, but we will get, we will try to get, we will get a flyer in the March statement and then notify everybody that way as well. I don't know if we can also put something in the Canyon City Daily Record and get something published as a public notice as well.
Sure.
We could also do, we could also do something like that.
That'd be great, and that's great to hear that it will for sure go, a flyer will go in the March statement.
Right.
Just to be clear, folks would have time to change their payment method based on receiving that.
And.
I just want to make sure that we're allowing appropriate lag time so that folks have the ability and the option.
Once this agreement is approved and signed, we could also look at sending a separate mailer out. It would be an additional cost to the city, but we could send an additional mailer out ahead of the March bills. So that's also an option that we would have.
And, and I'm just going to kind of go on with what Amy was saying. I think there's a lot of people who just grab their ballots on automatic pay with their credit card, no matter what. They don't even look anymore. And, and, you know, I think that's something that, you know, we got to make sure that we get to those people. It's just something that we need to be aware of, because I do know people who just, you know, how was your water bill? I don't know, I just paid it.
Right.
You know, we got to make sure that we're not going to charge, make sure that. You know, we got to make sure that we're not going to charge, make sure that-
Give it, and give them fair time to know.
And I defer to the city, uh, city staff as to if it needs to be a flyer in advance, to Tim's point exactly, so that it is a separate communication? Or if putting it in the March water bill provides enough advanced time for folks to make that change? But I do want to ensure that we are providing folks, you know, at least a week or two. Both making sure that every single water user is informed and then that, that they have sufficient time to change.
And there is the free option to have an automatic payment done as well. And that is by filling out a form and providing it to our utility billing specialists. Then that is an ACH payment that comes directly from their bank account. It does have to be, you know, they do have to provide their banking information. So it can't be debit card, it can't be credit card. But that is a way, it can be an automatic payment at no charge to our community.
Yes, and I would hope that the flyer would lay out the steps exactly as you just did as to how folks can take advantage of that free option.
So that's the direction that we want to give staff to get a flyer out, even to the extent that you may have to delay the implementation of that system.
Yeah, and part of the delay with the implementation of the system, it also delays our normal cash receipting and it ends up also creating duplicate work as well for the staff. So that's another reason we don't necessarily want to keep pushing, pushing things out. But we will get, we will get notification out to the community and we will, I will make sure that city administrator knows where we are so he can keep council informed as to if we were able to, when we're going to be able to be live with express bill pay. If it ends up being that we are not live till mid-April or the end of April, that would have given us about a month notice for people to switch.
Great, yeah, as long as, I think as long as folks have a couple of weeks' notice as to how to switch, then, then that's sufficient from my perspective at least. I don't know if the rest of council has a-
Any other comments?
Yeah, are, are your lights not working? Then we know to-
My lights have been out for some time. No, no, they're not.
No comment about those lights.
It's not fair.
Uh, yeah, I just, I think it's important that we approach this pretty carefully, partly because at the same time that this shift is going on in how credit card fees will get passed along to the end user, there's also the consideration before council right now of a possible rate, water rate increase. So I just think we want to be crystal clear how we communicate with the public and, and make timely communication and make many communications about this credit card fee issue. And be real, real clear with what the alternatives are in payment form that would not cost the user anything, such as doing the old fashioned stuff that I do, pay by check. You can mail a check, you can bring a check in and then avoid credit card fees that way. But I just want to be sure we communicate that out as fully as we can with water customers.
Any other comments from-
Thank you, I really appreciate Director Nordick.
So my main panel up here for the mayor is not working. So we'll have to do this the old fashioned way. You can raise your hand, you can say, hey you, that'll work. But I don't know why, it's, it's rare unfair. Okay, any other comments on that? Tammy, do you feel comfortable with what we're going to do here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, any other questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain then a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jerry.
I move to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Okay, now, were there any, were there any modifications to it? There weren't really, that was just direction on the billing thing, okay? So, any, okay, first and a second, any discussion on that motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Well, thank you all. At this point, number eight is the administrator's report. Do you want to give that for Ryan or should we just talk about Ryan since he's not here?
Uh, I think I'll pass on both of those.
You will? Okay, oh, you're, all right. So, and then I've asked Leo to attend, Leo back there napping in the back. Oh, sorry, Amy, go ahead.
Sorry, I had a, a comment that I wanted to make and a question for the administrator. And given that the Director of Public Works, Evans, is here, I think it, it might still be appropriate with regard to Road, the Rhodes Avenue project. First, I really wanted to thank the Department of Public Works for putting up the large orange, orange signs that let folks know that they, where, that the businesses are open and that they can get, sorry, and how they can get to them. So thank you very much for that. And could you just give folks an update as to when the large pipe will be out of the road? Thanks.
Yeah, I asked Leo to come to cover that and other things that were going on. Then you might throw in, if you can, the huge construction site that's going on at the new Parks Building. It looks like they're going forever down.
Yeah.
So can you just cover those and-
I certainly can. Um, the Rhodes Avenue project has made some really good progress since our last council meeting. Last week, they received their railroad permit for the new bore. Last Friday, they started work on that new bore. And we expect that they'll start pulling that pipe back through tomorrow, as soon as tomorrow. And then hopefully, that's about a two-day operation. They do have all told probably about three weeks to finish everything up. That's pulling the new pipe through, making the connections, patching the road, removing the piece of old pipe that's in the way of our storm pipes, yada, yada. But things are making a good turn for the better now. We did add some more signs for the business. I know that Atmos and their representatives have been out and talked to all the businesses and are doing a better job of keeping them up to date, week to week, on the progress out there as well. So hopefully, that helps everybody get along a little better, so. Yeah, that one's been good. And then the Parks Building is, I would say, about eighty percent of the way done. So we expect to take possession of that building at the very start of April. We're on track to finish everything then. We'll look to have some kind of public open house or something to that effect to let everybody come see it. But that is nearly done. A brand-new ninety-two-hundred-square-foot Parks facility that'll replace the current roughly three-thousand-square-foot facility that's down at Centennial Park and allow for that space to kind of be reutilized for a better purpose down there along the river in the future.
And how's the Main Street project going?
Oh, Main Street, uh, Main Street's going very well. Uh, it's kind of the slow point of the project. We've got all of the water in. We start work on fire lines this week. So the URA added several fire lines and is kind of helping some of that along. Those will get started this week for the properties on the south side. All of our underground work is just about done, except for a few water services that we found needed to be lowered. So we expect the third street portion between Main and Highway fifty to get gravel and prepped this week for paving. All the work on that section is done, so coming along pretty well.
You think we're on schedule on that?
I would say we are on schedule to finish probably, probably mid-May, maybe the latter part of May Memorial Day timeframe. We pushed back a little bit with the addition of those fire lines, added a couple of weeks to our project. But they were important to get done ahead of time.
And does the Blossom Festival people understand where they're going to have to start now?
Yes, we, we contingency planned with the parade committee so that we have alternate parade route and parade staging area all set up. There's a chance we may still get done, but if we don't get done in time for that, we do have a backup plan and we'll put that in place around the first part of April.
Just out of curiosity, it looked like there at the new Park Building, was it especially deep there? They had a huge claw going, was it, what were they going after there, the sewer or?
Oh, there was no sewer in front of the building. We had to extend the sewer main a couple hundred feet to get to it and it was about ten feet deep. So we had a pretty good hole in the middle of Elm Street for a couple of days.
I saw that, wow. Any questions of Leo? Amy?
Thank you. Um, I know many citizens and local groups such as RG Rio are interested in being part of the conversation about the old Parks Building and maybe potentially repurposing rather than removing. I just wanted to make sure that we are leaving it in place until those kind of Centennial Park master plan conversations and public input are had.
Yeah, no intentions to do any demolition at this time, just moving out and vacating it.
Awesome, and then also on the play wave, any update on the public safety measures there?
Yeah, that, um, that emergency repair that was approved at the last council meeting was completed last week as well, so that's all wrapped up and done. I would have to ask Rex, I believe he did have some reps from RG Rio out to check it out and everybody was really happy with how it turned out, so.
Awesome, thanks so much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions of Leo? You're not going to let him go that easily, are you? No, thank you, Leo. All right, let's move on to the public hearing. Public hearing, we're now open. And it's introduction, a first reading by title only of Ordinance One, Series twenty-twenty-five, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Approving an Amendment to the Four Mile Ranch Plan Development District." And we'll turn it up to Patrick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, we are here to consider a request by the new owner of the undeveloped portions of Four Mile Ranch property to amend the existing plan development district. Council seeks to approve this request. It will involve the adoption of Ordinance One, Series of twenty-twenty-five. The property that is the subject of this rezoning hearing is located at the east end of Canyon City and is bordered by US Highway fifty to the south and Four Mile Lane to the west. The Four Mile Ranch property is comprised of approximately one thousand five hundred sixty-three acres, which makes it the largest planned development district in Canyon City. It was annexed to Canyon City in nineteen ninety-three. And at that time, it was owned P, with a PUD or Planned Unit Development. This is an overlay type of zoning in which the overlay allows for modifications to the underlying Euclidean zoning where it pertains to uses, lot configurations, and height or bulk standards. In two thousand and three, the Four Mile Ranch property was organized into a Plan Development District, or PDD. And I will sometimes also use the definition PD as meaning interchangeable in this case, Plan Development District, Plan Development, they're essentially the same thing. This is a true form of customized zoning in that it does not rely upon any code-defined Euclidean zoning. Rather, internal land use areas are defined on a land use map and the regulations regarding uses, lot standards, and height or bulk standards are specified within a set of written instructions, also known as a development guide. Both the map and the guide are recorded and become the effective zoning for the property. Now, since the current PD was adopted twenty-two years ago, a few changes have occurred to the original plan. First, two of the residential neighborhoods were platted and constructed in the mid-two thousands. One is within the MF four area, which is located west of Four Mile Parkway. And the other is the SFR one A area, which is located to the north of the current terminus of Cowboy Way. Also built in the mid-two thousands was an eighteen-hole golf course, which is still used today. In two thousand and nine, a parcel with a multifamily residential designation at the northeast corner of Four Mile Parkway and County Road one twenty-three was developed as a Southern Peaks Treatment Facility for teens. In two thousand and twenty, a seventy-six acre parcel west of Four Mile Lane was sold off and rezoned to R-two medium-density residential, removing it from the Four Mile Ranch Plan Development. That same year, an eighty-four acre parcel in the northeast corner of Four Mile Ranch was sold off and built with a single-family home. And in two thousand and twenty-two, a forty-five acre parcel at the northwest corner of US Highway fifty and Four Mile Parkway was platted into a five-lot commercial subdivision with the first two lots being developed as a Love's Travel Stop and a Love's RV Park. The result is that none of these parcels will be part of the new plan development. They are going to remain as part of the two thousand and three amendment. The currently approved Four Mile Ranch Plan Development allows for three types of residential densities across twenty-eight internal land use areas. These areas range from estate lot residential with an average density of zero-point-seven-three dwelling units per acre to multifamily residential with an average density of eight-point-eight-one dwelling units per acre. Non-residential land use areas are also provided for within the existing Four Mile Ranch Plan Development. For commercial uses, there are thirteen internal land use areas totaling one hundred and seventy, seventy-eight-point-five acres. It should be mentioned, however, that these areas are labeled with such uses as neighborhood commercial, commercial pads, and village center commercial and conference center. The current development guide, however, only provides one set of use, height and bulk, and lot configuration standards for all commercially designated areas and in some cases, directly conflicting with what the development plan map designates for the site. Four Mile Ranch also currently provides for six internal land use areas, which are either active park space for, or, or spaces intended for public dedication, such as school sites. The active use recreation areas will also include the Four Mile Ranch Golf Course. And finally, a total of five-hundred-twenty-seven-point-nine acres of natural open space is shown on the current plan. Note that under the current Four Mile Ranch Plan Development Regulations, natural open space does not actually preclude development as many of these areas allow for low-density residential uses. This would seem to contradict the intent of a natural open space area, as I've always understood that in my planning background, natural open spaces not to be intruded upon with any kind of development. So with that, let's talk about the proposed zoning. The proposed PD amendment for Four Mile Ranch modifies the internal land use plan and guide to make several key changes. Among them, within residential areas, there will be four residential types, ranging from rural residential at the low-density end to estate lot, um, to, to estate lot residential, urban lot residential, and multifamily residential. However, the total number of approved dwelling units does not change from what was approved with the original two thousand and three PD, that is, one thousand eight hundred seventy-four total dwelling units within the property. Commercial land uses are also better defined in that they are now separated into one of four types: community commercial, neighborhood commercial, village commercial, and golf course resort commercial. Each of these internal land use areas now has its own set of specific uses, height and bulk limitations, and lot configuration requirements. Active park use areas and natural open space designations are also included in the amendment request. And it should be noted that in this plan, the natural open space areas do not allow for any residential uses. Now, this proposal concentrates higher-density residential areas towards the middle of the plan development and lowers residential density as one, one moves towards the northerly and westerly periphery. The most intense commercial use areas are along the County Road one twenty-three corridor with commercially, commercial intensity scaled back to coexist with the neighborhoods in the center of Four Mile Ranch. Now with that, the planned development districts in, within the city of Canyon City are evaluated against eight criteria, which are defined in Section seventeen-oh-eight-oh-four-oh of the UDC. Those criteria include comprehensive plan agreement, placemaking, integrated design with identifiable centers and edges, public welfare, compatibility with adjacent land uses, impact on public facilities and resources, archaeological, historical, or cultural impact, drives, parking, and circulation. The staff report summarizes the findings on each of these criteria, showing that the proposed plan development, plan and guide meet these criteria. Now, zoning, in this case, a major plan develop, major amendment to a plan development district is the beginning of the development process. Four Mile Ranch will still be required to proceed through subdivision filings for each of the internal land use areas. And site plans for all non-residential districts are also going to be required. The land use process does not end here. Additionally, both Public Works and the Fremont Sanitation District have some questions the applicant has not yet fully answered. Those need to be answered before the next steps in the development process can commence. These items have been contemplated as conditions of approval on this PD amendment request. And Planning Commission, it should be noted, conducted a public hearing on this application on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, and noted some modifications to be made in the development guide and plan. These modifications have been made in the interval between Planning Commission and City Council. So with that, and per the public notice requirements for text amendments to Title seventeen as specified in Section seventeen-ten-oh-three-oh, C-three-D, this hearing has been advertised with a public notice on the city's website for at least fifteen days prior to the Canyon, the City Council hearing. Staff and the applicant have also remained in regular contact with members of the public who have expressed interest in this project. And with that, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve this major PD amendment for Four Mile Ranch Plan Development with the adoption of- major PD amendment for Four Mile Ranch Plan Development with the adoption of ordinance one, series of twenty twenty-five, on first reading. It is also recommended that the approval be contingent upon the two remaining conditions being satisfied prior to the city accepting any subdivision application for property within Four Mile Ranch. Those have to do with clarifications as requested by Public Works and the Fremont Sanitation District. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have. Present to speak on behalf of this project is Mr. Jonathan Sims. He is the architect representing the applicant and property owner.
Okay, are there any questions of Patrick, or should we go to Mr. Sims? Oh, I think your light might work.
Uh, Patrick, I just had one question. Um, when it- the- the blue area on here where it says staff makes the following recommendations, it says that number three, as a condition of a recordation of the ordinance amending the planned development district for Four Mile Ranch, the applicant must resolve the remaining issues outlined in the Public Works Department memo. With the exception of the water demand model, I just, I was one- wanted to make sure that they've- that there is some kind of progress or plan for them to find a source of raw, untreated water for irrigation for the golf course and perhaps some other public areas.
So, I believe Leo can partially answer that question. I believe the applicant also has some information for you about that when they are ready to make their presentation.
Thank you.
Shall we go right to the applicant? Yes, who? Mr. Sims, you are Mr. Sims, right? Just introduce yourself, please.
Hi, thank you, council members. My name is Jonathan Sims. I am the owners' representative for the ownership group behind the Four Mile Ranch Plan Development. Um, as many of you know, there's a long history with Four Mile Ranch. Uh, here is a quick summary of the milestones. For those less familiar, Patrick did go through a bit of the history, so I'll just flip through these. Um, just wanted to provide this as a reference. Uh, plans for development at Four Mile Ranch have been in place for over thirty years. As development of Four Mile Ranch has been slow, to say the least, there remains a commitment to providing more attainable housing and more housing for all ages, especially our older population. The city's comprehensive plans continue to articulate the need, as evidenced by the current Picture Canyon City twenty forty, the city's comprehensive plan. Here are a few pertinent excerpts from this guiding statutory document. Lack of existing housing inventory is an issue. Housing costs also contributing to issues with attraction and retention of employees, including teachers. Lack of attainable, affordable housing is an issue in- with Canyon City. Provide distinct residential areas and neighborhoods that offer a diverse mix of housing types and price points to meet the needs of Canyon City's current and future residents. The Four Mile Ranch area is the most significant opportunity for new residential growth within Canyon City. Residents and stakeholders identified a need for senior housing with the growing retiree population. Complete the housing developments in the Dawson and Four Mile Ranch subdivisions. Promote the development at Four Mile Ranch of a fifty-five-plus active community. The city has room for outward residential growth within its urban growth boundary, but there remains a considerable acreage of undeveloped and under- or underutilized land within the existing neighborhoods and subdivisions, such as Four Mile Ranch. Also, in two thousand ten, there was a city ordinance that noted the Four Mile Ranch Golf Course offers a unique recreational opportunity, enhances quality of life, generates tourism, and fosters growth and economic development for the city. This sentiment remains in the current municipal code. As many of you know, the city commissioned a housing study. Here are a few key points from this study. Regional housing is becoming increasingly unaffordable. The current housing stock is outdated, the oldest housing stock in the region. Approximately sixty-five percent of Canyon City's workforce lives outside the city limits. Canyon City's growth is dependent on net migration in. Outmigration is a threat to Canyon City's growth. New residential development could increase affordability. There is a strong market for retirees, especially if smaller units, townhomes, condo- and condos are developed in areas like Four Mile Ranch. We contracted a feasibility and market analysis, and we hired the same consultant who developed the city's housing study. Here are a few key points from this analysis. Four Mile Ranch represents a catalytic development opportunity. Four Mile's unique position as a regional catalytic development is why public-private partnerships are necessary. Its feasibility depends on the city, the urban renewal authority, and their partnering taxing entities strategically working with the developers on a plan that can fund its public infrastructure. The combination of metro district funding and tax increment financing will also require significant political backing to achieve development feasibility. The new ownership took control of the planned development in October two thousand twenty-three. We've spent the past year and a half on reconnaissance and better understanding the whats, whens, who's, hows, and whys. We've reviewed each of the previous PDD guides, reports, agreements, surveys, maps, and more, there is a lot. I mentioned the updated feasibility and market analysis. A lot has changed since the previous feasibility study from over twenty years ago, and this study has helped us to better understand how to position Four Mile Ranch for success. Big picture, we are not reinventing the wheel. We are simply fine-tuning what is there now. The feasibility and market analysis told us that we need the planned development to be more efficient with resources and funding, and to bring more attainable housing to the market sooner. So how do we do this? Big picture, we are shifting some, not all, residential densities southward, bringing more residential rooftops closer to existing infrastructure. We are not shifting in large numbers, but only slightly tilting the table to help spur housing development forward and to be more efficient with resources. With the revised PD, we are not extending as much development northward up and into the hills, because frankly, it is very expensive to do so, and further strains the utility services, especially water. This causes us to be more efficient with land, providing more detached and attached single-family homes to the market sooner. We still have many large lot, single-family residential neighborhoods, but now we have more market-appropriate and attainable housing. So back to tonight's PD update. Here is a quick, high-level summary of what is staying the same and what is changing. Some key foundations of what is staying the same. Same overall arrangement of parcels and uses. Same roadway locations. Same overall density, a maximum of two thousand seven hundred and six residential units. Same utility systems and plans. Some featured improvements to the PD. Infrastructure footprint and cost reduction. More smaller, single-family residential homes on smaller lots. More attainable and affordable homes. More homes available earlier. More mixed-use commercial and residential. More hiking and biking trails. We have the same commitments to providing a range of housing opportunities, new commercial and community amenities, new entertainment offerings, and enhanced recreation for all-age living. In fact, this past week, we met with FAR, Fremont Adventure Recreation, and a representative from City Parks and Rec, as well as our civil engineering team, to kickstart plans to begin installing new hiking and biking str- trails with a new trailhead. We are very excited to get this going. We are not here to simply provide more housing, but we are- we are also focused on accessibility and universal design. We want to provide healthy and affordable living for all ages and all abilities, and to provide for income generation and intergenerational wealth. We are not only adjusting density locations to boost residential neighborhoods, but also within the commercial properties to provide opportunities for mixed-use, micro-hotels, live-work, flex-spaces, and more efficient uses of the land. I want to take a moment to talk about the ownership group. They are not a hedge fund. They are a group of individuals who have invested in many other properties in Canyon City. Many are veterans, active and retired military, some have homes in Canyon City, and more have interest in moving here. They believe in Canyon City and this community. We have been working closely with the city, their attorneys, our attorneys, and consultants, and engineers for years now, to better position Four Mile Ranch for success. These four pillars for successful living are found in the city's comprehensive plans, and they form the plan for Four Mile Ranch. I want to thank Mr. Lee Waltoney and Mr. Michael Mitz, two residents of Four Mile Ranch, for their diligent research, thoughtful questions, and for working with us as we continue to refine this plan development update. I also want to thank Mr. DiOrio for mentioning his drainage concerns. We have notified our civil engineering and drainage team, and we'll continue to work with him to make sure that his concerns are addressed. Thank you, council members. Thank you to the residents in attendance, and thank you to the numerous city staff for your support and guidance. I am happy to answer any questions. And to the water question, thank you for bringing that up. We do have, I think I've mentioned it before, about four or five different potential avenues to bring raw water. Um, we continue to explore those options. We have diagrams and notes and many things that we can provide and review in further detail. Um, I did not bring that with the- to this meeting here. This is more of a zoning type of discussion, but I'm very happy to ex- uh, to review those details further at- at another time, or we can get into it a little bit more as far as raw water capture and usage at the golf course. It's absolutely a priority for us. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions of council?
Have- have you met with someone specifically? I mean, are there- there are connections out there that you could make? And I just wanted to make sure, before we go forward, and then another year rolls around, and we still have the problem with selling treated water for irrigation. I just want to make sure that you do have specific resources that you can go to.
Very specific. Um, the city is one. We've been working with Travis Payne and others to try to solve this challenge. There's a number of other water entities and private users. I hesitate to bring their names here to this meeting at this time, because water rights and water access is a sensitive issue, so I- I hesitate to give any specific names at this time. But offline, we can talk about that further. I just, I- I want to be careful to the sensitivities and- and- and with- and of especially water rights and water access.
I just, you know, it's just something that going forward, this is- this is a challenge that we all need to come together on, because we- we can't continue to spread that across all the users in our- our water system. And that, I think that comes up every year, and I just want to make sure that you've got the right team in working on getting some water rights, getting that, because there are ways to do it. And- and I- I have contacts if you want to talk to me. Thank you.
I would love to. Thank you. Yeah, we do have, it's a priority for us. We've been working on this for years, really. Before we- before the ownership took, um, uh, control, purchased the property, we were very- made very well aware of the water challenges. Obviously, the water on the golf course for irrigation is, um, is a- is a challenge, and it's a- we want to find that win-win. It's not good for the community, the city, residents, anyone, for the golf course to utilize treated water for irrigation, and so that is a priority for us. Um, like I mentioned, we have four or five good leads and potentials, um, and I- I'm happy to talk through those further with you. I just don't want to give any names, and I would love to hear your thoughts and recommendations.
Okay, let's, uh-
And Mr. Mayor, I if you- I would encourage council, tonight, you're acting in a quasar judicial capacity on zoning, and so I would not offer providing assistance to the applicant on, um, things like water resources at this point.
That's exactly where I was going. So are there any questions regarding the- the plat and what has been discussed between Jonathan and Patrick of council? Emily?
I, um, I wasn't sure if there were any other city staff who are planning to present anything, or just respond to questions at some point, or how that was going to be.
We were going to ask Leo. We can't let him out of here. So, but is that, would you like to ask Leo a question?
Yeah, I- I would. I think, I- I wanted to be known that it was a bit of a challenge, in my opinion, I'm speaking for myself, a bit of a challenge going through this packet, uh, for this agenda item, because we- we got several versions, two or three versions of the development guide. I think the one that we got Friday was the correct one to pay attention to, but there were other materials in the packet that, for example, the memo that Leo Evans, our Public Works Director, had. We had a December version with some updates, but it wasn't clear what the dates were on those updates, and then after three o'clock this afternoon, we got a newer version of that. So I just want it to be clear that I- I just don't know where we are with trying to narrow this all down. There are some large questions remaining for me, and I- I don't know if you want to, Leo, and I'm not even sure if everyone on council had a chance to read the three fifteen PM today version of your updated memo, and maybe it would help if, at the very least, if you would go through that and give us the most current information. And the- the broader question for me is, just how much of this needs to be pinned down in order for us to approve this amendment to the planned development and pass the ordinance on first reading, if we do that tonight? Or how much of it is okay that it's still pending or unresolved in the- the language that you use? And I, we just, I think council members just need to be clear where we stand on all of that.
Yeah, I- and Cory could probably answer better. I think, to his point, this is a zoning issue. Many of my comments are things that will need to be addressed in a master development agreement or at the subdivision and site plan stage, so in a lot of ways, the work they've done is ahead of where we maybe are at council tonight. I don't know if that's, is that fair, Cory?
It is, and I'll- I'll expand after you're done.
Yeah, so many of my, um, as you alluded, I did send a message out today. We received updated packets on a number of the documents that the development team has worked on. I think we got them on like the seventeenth of February, maybe, around then, a couple weeks ago. Um, it included an updated drainage report that I think addressed every comment that staff had given them, an updated traffic report that I think addressed every comment that staff had given them, and maybe raised just one or two more clarifying points, um, updated exhibits for all of the, uh, large exhibits for the site plans, and updated sanitation report, which I didn't personally review, but I know went out to the sanitation district as well, so. Yeah, my, the memo that kind of went out this afternoon, a lot of what was included in the original packet was resolved with those updated submittals that came out on the seventeenth. There are still some questions, but as I mentioned, I think those are things that probably most likely get resolved at the master development and site plan subdivision-type stages.
Well, that, for me, that's what I'm kind of missing. I- I would work better if I had a, uh, a crosswalk showing what are all the pending items, the unresolved items, at what point will they be resolved, and is it okay that they're resolved following this zoning decision? I'm a little unclear on that. I don't know if Cory wants to address that or who, but that's what I'm struggling with.
Let- let me try to answer it this way. If- if there is one slide you should pay attention to from Mr. Mulready's presentation, it's the criteria for the amendment to the PDD. Having said that, it is critical that you understand what you're approving tonight. So if council has questions as to whether and how the criteria in seventeen point oh- So if council has questions as to whether and how the criteria in 17.08.040 are being satisfied by the applicant, I would encourage you that those are the questions to be asked tonight to satisfy yourself. But what Leo said is also spot-on. Many of these issues related to infrastructure, related to, ultimately to water, and some of the other components that will be addressed in later land uses, that is for later. Ultimately, the issue tonight, and again, the criteria are in, we're in the staff report, but if I were to summarize it, it is ultimately compatibility. Compatibility with the master plan, compatibility with the surrounding area, and frankly, all of the criteria in 17.08.040, in my view, related to zoning, and a zoning amendment relate to that, those, those components. But you absolutely have to be certain as to what you're approving. And so if there are questions, if there is a need for additional information to provide you the roadmap because you receive stuff late that makes you unclear as to what you're approving, those are certainly questions for staff that if they're not answered appropriately, you can certainly continue this. You could certainly approve it and make, and ask for whatever additional information you need in advance of second reading. You have all of those options, but it is important you know what you're approving tonight.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to, I think we got a little off track. That's just me personally. This is just about zoning. The questions that he's been asked is infrastructure, and that could come up differently in different sections as they come in for that approval. I think this is compatible. Are you happy with this? Jonathan?
Yes, thank you. I think, yeah, distinguishing between planning, zoning and planning and engineering is important. Every construction effort, whether it's horizontal infrastructure or vertical construction, requires further engineering and design. There are methods and systems in place in order to continue that engine, those engineering efforts. This is zoning and planning, and so I think just understanding that distinction and understanding that we have, as Patrick mentioned, this is the first step among many as development occurs out there, and as we continue, we get more and more into the engineering and finer details, but this is more about zoning and planning.
Could I follow up on that?
Just let me, let me finish. I've been in this from the very beginning, since '93. Had we done something like this years ago, we wouldn't have the mess that was created. We have this now. This, this makes sense. This is logical. This is all it is. Any one of these pieces in here, when you come in to do something with, has further approval and further investigation. That's all we got right here. This is logical. This is very logical. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, since we don't have the slide up, I'm, I'm in the staff report on digital pages, I don't know, about 68, 68, where I think those same eight items that were mentioned are also listed. On page 68, digital page 68, there's reference to item F, impact on public facilities and resources, and there's discussion in there about the city water system. It's known for, I'm just quoting from it a little bit, it is known that a second water tank will be necessary to serve portions of Four Mile Ranch east of Four Mile Parkway. So there's some discussion about that. The external review, the internal review that's done, there's several issues related to public facilities and resources that I just think it's worth putting on the table. Not only the fact that we don't yet have a water model for the development, and as I understand it, we don't need that tonight, but we need to understand that this is in the city limits and the city water system has to serve it. And I'm not talking about the golf course, I'm talking about development, residential, commercial, et cetera. So, you know, I think we need a certain level of comfort that the city staff feel like we have the resources, the infrastructure to serve this area as it develops, so if there's anything more to be said about that. I did have two other specific questions that relate to G, archaeological impact, and also the letter received from the fire district. If someone could respond to either of those, I, when I sent my question earlier and got an answer by email about archaeological impact, I don't think, I probably just didn't word my question well because I don't think the answer was responsive. I just wanted to know if there's anything in the local history group or in our local museum or any other resource like that that could speak at all to the historical or cultural history of the area, the archaeological history, and whether there's anything there that just should at least be acknowledged. And then the fire, I don't have the fire department letter in front of me, but there was not only suggestion in the fire department letter that sprinklers in homes should be considered, or whatever the verb was, but there was also some discussion about that there may need to be a fire station in this area at some point, and I just wasn't sure when all that would be addressed, since it does seem to come under public facilities and resources and impact on those.
Corey, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, because I think it's important to understand what criteria F says explicitly, which is the plan development is designed so that adequate utilities, road access, drainage, and other necessary facilities will be provided to serve it. So it is a design issue at this point in terms of compatibility, but the specific questions you ask about, for example, where the water tank will be located, how's it going to be paid for, all of the, the infrastructure, both hard and soft, and water rights and infrastructure that delivers the water, that is all going to be at the point of subdivision and future land uses. So you have to look at the design and say, will this work from a land use perspective subject to future infrastructure being developed?
Yeah, we're sliding off the point here. This is, this is what we have. This is just for zoning. This is a logical division of that huge parcel out there that I think makes a great deal of sense. All the other stuff, when they come in for any one of those parcels, the things that you're talking about, the water, whatever, that has to be accomplished and taken care of that time. Right now, we're just talking about the incremental zoning areas as you see up there. That's it. Anything other than that, they have to come in and have that discussion when they actually physically want to work in that section. That's the way I understand it. So that's the vote. Amy?
Thanks. I do have a number of questions related specifically to the Four Mile Ranch plan design, plan development document that was presented to us. Let's see. On page two, it states, it gives us a definition of density and notes that while the overall cap will be in place, it could also, the numbers within each of the planning areas may be more or less, and I was wondering, given that it doesn't define that any further, how that overlays with our UDC density guidelines?
So because this is a planned development, there is a number of dwelling units that are allowed throughout the entire development. If, for example, someone comes along with a planning area that allows for, pick a number, 200 dwelling units, 200 lots, and when they actually get to physically laying it out, it can only really support, once you put roads and drainage infrastructure and whatnot, 160 lots. That's a 40-lot difference, and they've got the ability, prior to approval of a preliminary plan, to shift those 40 units somewhere else within the plan. That would trigger a PD amendment process, which would again come back to planning commission and council.
Great, thank you. Is it okay if I run through the questions that I have, Mayor Troutman? Or do you want us to take them one at a time?
Quickly, let's do this. Go ahead.
Okay. My understanding is that I'm not allowed to ask these outside of this forum, otherwise I would do so. But our attorney is left, so.
What are you talking about? Outside of what forum? What? What are you saying?
Forum. I would ask these questions via email or outside of this forum if I had the ability to do so, but given that it's a quasi-judicial matter, my understanding is that I have to ask them in this forum.
Yeah, we need to stay on topic. We're talking about the zoning. This plan is presented to us now. If you're talking, want to talk about infrastructure and water and roads, that's another issue.
No, none of my questions are about that. All of them are directly related to the 16-page zoning proposal that we received.
Go ahead.
On page five, just wanted to say it's great to see that you guys have permanent public access for recreation areas. I really appreciate it. On page six, it notes that you'll be maintaining and operating those hard courts and other recreation areas yourself unless the city would like to take them over. I was wondering if you had talked to the rec district. I noticed that our executive director of the rec district is also in the room. I believe that Four Mile Ranch is within the rec district area, so I was curious as to why the city was specifically called out, but the rec district wasn't.
Well, this is specifically, I think that's the nuts and bolts of when they actually come in with that area, that's the discussion. That's nothing to do with zoning.
It, it does, though. I mean, we are approving your 16, the 16-page document.
And when they come in with that area where they want the courts or whatever, then we can have that discussion, don't you think?
I believe that we are approving this document, so if it isn't laid out in this document.
And just particularly for zoning?
Yes.
Not for particularities?
So the question I would have is, do you find the wording that's in that paragraph inadequate in some way?
I find it to be limited to only the city being able to take on the responsibility of those areas as opposed to the city and the rec district.
Well, we could add or other public agency if you'd like.
Great. That would be wonderful. On page eight, and again, this is specific to zoning, on page eight, you have your land use regulations table. I was surprised to see that duplex, triplex, and quadplexes are permitted in the RR and SFR zones. I was one, my understanding was that the RR zone was meant to be kind of the, the room-your-elbow-room spaces and the SFR, single-family home. Could you speak to why those two are permitted?
Yes, so the RR still has maximum build and floor area ratio restrictions, setback restrictions. There's a, there's a limitation to the extent of build, but we do want to provide more opportunity to, for that missing middle. That's a concept from, between single-family homes and multifamily, there's opportunity to provide more attainable housing product and to provide for income generation. So as opposed to allowing multifamily of, you know, five units or more, we wanted to give the, each residential parcel and area a bit more elbow room to be able to provide duplexes and triplexes. Those are key opportunities to provide more attainable, affordable housing. It's not to say that we're requiring those to be built, only giving them the opportunity to build just a bit more density in a rural residential parcel than what is now. Just, just simply to provide more attainable housing product options than what was in the previous plan development amendment. Does that make sense?
I guess where I'm not really understanding is why wouldn't the quadplexes, triplexes, and duplexes be in a multifamily zone? Like, why would you, how could they be in a single-family residential or in a rural residential? Like, what, what would a quadplex be doing in a rural residential zone?
Simply to provide more flexibility. We're not adding multifamily into those rural residential. We're just simply giving those rural residential options for a bit more density, a bit more affordability potential.
And let me, if I could help maybe answer, because that's the nature of a PD. Part of what a PD is intended to do, if you approve it, is to provide that level of flexibility, whereas if you had straight zoning and said it was, you know, large lot residential only, you wouldn't have the flexibility to bring in something more dense. So this particular PD is intended to provide that flexibility where straight zoning would not.
Housing development has been so stagnant, and it is very stagnant here in the city, and we're not mandating or pushing this across the city, but for this specific plan unit development that has been challenged from a development standpoint, we need more attainable and affordable housing options in more areas. We can only take this particular area and give it a bit more flexibility to support development and more housing.
So would a, would you be able to take a rural residential parcel and put multiple quadplexes on it?
I don't believe that that would be the case because that would turn into more than a quadplex on that particular parcel.
Even if they were detached from one another?
That would turn into essentially an eightplex on that parcel as opposed to a quad.
You're still going to have minimum lot sizes in each of these residential categories. So if you have one lot that complies with the minimum area and they put a quadplex on it, you have to go to another lot if you want to put any, you know, single-family duplex.
Okay.
And the idea is that this creates a diversity of housing type, which ultimately helps to strengthen neighborhoods?
Let's see. Again, specifically on zoning, wireless service is conditional in RR, ULR, and MF, but not in SFR. I wasn't sure if that was an oversight.
No, we, we want to make sure that rural residential areas are, each areas are very, from a wireless utility standpoint, want to make sure that each area is carefully studied to minimize the impact of wireless facilities. So we can certainly, instead of the P permitted, make that a C conditional, so that there's further.
It's currently a C conditional.
Oh, okay.
I was just wondering, it isn't permit, it isn't C conditional in one of the four, but it is in the other three.
Okay, well, happy to look at that further.
Okay, awesome. Thanks. Minor typo on page nine. You've got two number fives. On page 10, I was surprised that you wouldn't want a childcare center in your golf center so that kids could be watched. So just wanted to flag in case you wanted to look at it, if dads or moms wanted to drop off their kids while they were golfing. Also, similarly on page 11, I was surprised to not see a rec facility as permitted or C conditional in your AR zone, in your active recreation zone. Again, just something you may want to look at, given earlier in the document, you had noted the desire for hard courts and things like that. Similarly, surprised to not see artisan manufacturing allowed in your neighborhood commercial.
I'm sorry, what was that? Say that last one again. Surprised does not see.
Artisan manufacturing in your neighborhood commercial. Again, just wanted to flag in case it was something that you hadn't seen or hadn't thought I was concerned on page 13, again, related to zoning, it has height permitted of 100 in your central commercial, which is consistent with our UDC, but the UDC has the provision noting that if the commercial building is abutting a residential district, that the standard shall be the residential. So Patrick, I wasn't sure if you had specific thoughts about that and potentially adding that in. I would hate to see somebody whose residential lot, you know, 10 feet away from a 100-foot commercial building.
Can't a lot of these be covered when you come in with that area that you actually want to develop, instead of doing it at this time?
I believe at this time we are setting the guidelines for what is allowed, and if we do not at this time.
Well, I don't know if I agree with you on that. I think these, this is a zoning, this is a general zoning. Look at the colors up there. And if you want to change it, well, tell me what it is. We could debate this thing all night.
Corey, is my understanding correct? Like, we are setting what the, what the parameters of what we will permit zoning-wise?
Zoning-wise, yes. So if you're talking about height and density and bulk, the answer's yes.
Go ahead, Dan.
Okay. I, I just. Okay. I just, I would not want to see a 100-foot commercial building 10 feet away from a residence, and I think if we approve this as it's currently written, that's what we're saying would be permissible.
The intention was to mirror the allowances within the UDC. That additional provision of adjacency to residential parcels is something that we are happy to add in there.
Awesome. Thank you. I really appreciate that.
And those buffering standards would come into play as matter of the UDC when we get to site plan.
Great. With regard to the buffering standards, which I think are slightly, slightly further in their document. And then, lastly, on page 16, again, super minor typo, but just wanted to flag that it says that coniferous trees can have to be a minimum of six feet, and then the very next sentence says that they have to be a minimum of eight feet. So, may just want to double-check that on page 16.
Thank you.
And then, also on page 16, the landscaping requirements are much more detailed in the UDC, and based on the provisions on the first page of this document, I think it says if we talk about it at all, then we have to go with what's in this document as opposed to what's in the UDC. So, just would love further clarification from you, Patrick, maybe before second reading if this passes tonight.
We can have that paragraph reference the particular section of the UDC.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you. From my perspective, I think before second reading, it would be helpful to kind of get that crosswalk that Councilwoman Tracy mentioned as to what is actually being determined and decided based on what we pass and what will be determined and decided based on those future things that come before this council.
What does that have to do with zoning on this?
Mayor, I think...
What kind of crosswalk are you talking about?
What I said, and I can only speak for myself, was that it would be helpful, since we got so much information in our packets and by email today and so forth, we got a lot of information about the missing water model, about mud gulch and a dam, and we got a lot of information that maybe we don't need for our decision tonight. So, it would be helpful to have what I call a crosswalk, or a spreadsheet, or something that just says, here's all these things we've talked about in all these memos, but we don't need to decide these until, and then indicate at what point those things need to happen. I mean, I think some of what we're talking about tonight fits into the eight criteria that our attorney advised us to be paying attention to. But if we're told that, oh, no, we're safe in letting all of these things go, the dam at mud gulch, or whatever it's called, the water model, if we're okay in letting all that go, then we just need to know that so that we can make a good decision tonight. That's what we're talking about. It's just making sure we're not losing things as we go along. It doesn't work very well for me to try to track things by memo and memo update and updates that aren't dated and so on. It'd be easier if it was just all declared in a crosswalk format so that we know when these various things will be dealt with. I'm happy to not deal with them all tonight, but it just wasn't clear in our packet.
Corey, go ahead.
I think what Councilmember Tracy, and to a lesser extent, Councilmember Schmisher is referencing is what I would call a roadmap of when various approvals will be obtained. And I think certainly that city staff can identify, you know, which of the various things that were in the various memos, when they will be addressed in time for second reading, so that when you're talking about, for example, some of the water studies, some of the traffic studies, some of the other issues, give council the comfort that in approving, if you desire to approve this PDD amendment, that you will have an opportunity to review those other things at a later date, later in the land use process.
Yes, that's what I've been getting at. These will come on later as we progress through that. This project, this could be 20, 30 years, again, but this makes sense because now we have areas for various things. We don't know what the future's going to hold. What happens in five years, everybody wants to live in a hut. We don't have that zoning in there, but we can work on that. What we have right now is a sensible way of dividing this up for use. Let's get going. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the specific, we have a recommended action, excuse me, in front of us from our planning department, planning and zoning, and there's two recommendations that are retained in that recommended action. And as I understand it, both of those are engineering-related, both of those recommendations to be retained are engineering-related. Is that not true? That mean, that the, addressing everything in the December 13th memo and addressing everything in the sanitation's December 11th memo, those are, those are engineering issues, are they not?
Those are. Is that the recommendation that came from the planning commission?
Yes, and so that, so my question is, is do we, the, that's premature to be, you know, including those things, it seems to me, and that's what I just wanted to check and make sure that I was thinking about this correctly.
Yeah, that would be my suggestion as well, but it's planning commission's recommendation, certainly. They wanted to assure, that was their interpretation of the criteria that they are subject to.
Understand. They did not have your wise counsel, counselor.
Anyone else?
And I would also remind council, we still need to take public comment under the public hearing.
Does anybody in the audience like to do public comment? Come on up.
Ready for me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay.
We'll start the buzzer.
All right. My name is Lee Waltoney. I live in Four Mile Ranch on Telegraph Trail, about halfway down Fairway Number Two. I'd like to thank Mr. Mulready and Mr. Sims for all they've done to educate me because I'm certainly in over my head in this process. I did speak at the planning commission meeting back on the ninth, and I think I had four different areas that I was concerned about and, or mentioned, and there were some concerns I had as well. All of those concerns have been addressed except one, and that is, as a resident, I'm concerned, and I have neighbors who are concerned, that as the infrastructure is put in place, that we will incur more mill levy. Fremont County Assessor's Office, Four Mile Ranch, Metro District One, already has the highest mill rate of any district in the county. So, we've got a lot of taxes that we're required to pay. As a little bit of background, there is a document that was approved in September of 2003. It's called the Service Plan for Four Mile Ranch Metropolitan Districts Number One, Two, Three, and Four. As far as I can tell, that document is still the governing document. It's almost 22 years old. The developer at the time assumed issuance of almost $44 million in bonds, and the estimated mill was a total of 35 mil. We're currently paying about 54 mil. Metropolitan District One includes the area of Cowboy Way as well as up on Telegraph Trail as you head toward the golf course. There is an undeveloped portion of that that would be accessed through John Wayne Parkway, as well as an extension of Eldorado, and I think it's Rio...
Rio Bravo.
Rio Bravo. As it stands now, that would be additional funding that Metro District that we're in would have to come up with. We've had discussions with Jonathan about the feasibility of that district being split as a way to isolate what's there. This may not even be the form for it, this discussion. If it's not, I'm up to here and reading, I've read it online, and I have no idea how to clean, clear the water up. So, if somebody can provide me guidance that this is not the form, it would be much appreciated.
Yeah. It wouldn't be at this point. That would be at a later date, because that's structural. So, when that is proposed to occur in that area, I think that discussion would be valid. Am I right or wrong?
That is correct. The Metro District is a financing mechanism, and how this is financed is not at issue tonight.
Right.
So, at that point, there would be an additional hearing? Would I need to go to the Metro District first to re-educate or educate myself?
I don't know if the Metro District is contemplating service plan amendments. If so, that would come to council. Metro District is also a separate governmental entity that you can work with, but ultimately, when there is discussions about infrastructure being constructed, I would anticipate that would involve the Metro District. That will certainly come to council.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No? Anyone else? Your hand is up, Mr. DeArio. Would you like to approach?
I'd like to know... I'd like to know when the meeting on for the water, like for irrigation and stuff, because I know what ditch you're kind of talking about, and we don't have that kind of water that you guys are looking for, but I'd like to be there to kind of explain that. Because I've been on that ditch for about 30 years, and it's...
Let's get your information, and we can, Andrea or Jonathan or someone, that would be, we don't, they would have to...
You don't have any date on when that water meeting's going to be, or is it even for the public?
No, I don't. Does anyone? No. It just came up tonight.
Okay.
So, we don't have it yet.
If you need your contact information, we can...
Yeah, and in fact, Mr. Mayor, if I could, in fact...
Go ahead.
Again, council's considering the zoning approval tonight.
Right.
You can't, we couldn't even fathom the next steps in the process unless council ultimately approves the rezoning. So, while I appreciate the concern, there was no way, that's a long ways off.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I'd like to be there if you, when you do have.
Okay. Yes. Would you please give us your name and number? No, name?
My attorney registration. I'm Byron Elliott. I'm part of the ownership team. I've met most of you in the past, had the opportunity to speak. I just want to clarify a couple things on, one, what's being asked tonight. What we're being asked to approve tonight is a PD amendment that keeps the same number of residential units as was contemplated and approved all the way back in the original PD amendment. So, in terms of significant changes, not a significant number of rooftops have changed. I think there's an addition of a couple of commercial properties which actually benefits Canyon City in the terms of tax revenue, different amenities, different opportunities, whatever it may be, and taking what was previously the definition of what was allowable under commercial uses and actually refining that, breaking that up into four additional sections so that the development can be very intentionally designed. So, we're not putting a dollar general right in the middle of, you know, the community center. It's, we are very intentionally designing this thing in such a way. As reference, as we continue to go through the subdivision process, all of the checks and balances are in place. We've got to go through survey, we've got to talk to Leo, we've got to talk to Patrick's. Everything has to be staffed and resourced and researched, and the staff recommended approval for the PD amendment tonight. We have spoken with Mr. Hoffman and his team. Our land use attorney has iterated on this PD amendment over the last month or so, making sure that the city's position is secure in terms of what decisions can and can't be made without working through the staff and the appropriate process. So, I just want, I wanted to state that. I think that's, there's a little confusion as to what's being asked tonight. Not some major amendment, it's a very small, moving some residences from here down to a place that makes more sense. The consequences of kicking this can down the road again is, those are the kind of consequences that stall development activities. We currently have people that are interested in coming to Canyon City, coming to Four Mile Ranch, purchasing commercial properties, starting to develop, starting to add to the tax revenue. And so, if we continue to push this can down the road, it just, it affects the development. And so, I just want to make that known. I feel it. I'm working with, Rick Harmon's working with, we have potential buyers in the crowd tonight, ready to purchase property and start getting along with the development process at a very intentional and deliberate way that's been worked through the appropriate process through the planning department. So, I just ask you to reconsider whether we're going to table this for another discussion or a roadmap. It's a very limited ask tonight for what's being asked of city council. I just ask you to reconsider because we have put a lot of time and energy and effort to put this forward a second time now after being approved by the planning commission and being provided a staff recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Yes, go ahead.
Thanks. I think just for clarity's sake, what I think Councilwoman Tracy and I were suggesting is that that be developed before second reading, not that it be tabled. Given the type of ordinance that this is, our city council for all of these requires a first and second reading. So, not a proposal to stall or delay or anything like that, just a proposal to get the information that we are seeking before the already planned second reading. I don't want to speak for you, Councilwoman Tracy, but I think that that's what I heard you say as well.
Yeah, I agree, and I, well, you can tell we're not a rubber stamp kind of group here, and I think all of these questions and discussion are helpful. We understand what we're being asked to do tonight. I don't think we're confused about that, but because we were provided a lot of information in our packet as late as 3:15 this afternoon, we had questions about what was coming at us, that doesn't mean we're concerned about what's being proposed. So, just to clarify that.
Wonderful. Well, our staff is available, so any questions you may have, any context that we can provide. Full-time owner's rep, ready to participate. Thanks.
Any comments? Then I'm going to close the public hearing, and at this time, I would call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. John?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the planning commission for their attention to detail by including their requests for additional engineering information, but I don't think that's appropriate for us tonight. And so, I move that we approve major PD amendment for Four Mile Ranch Plan Development by adoption of ordinance number one, Series 2025, on first reading, setting second reading for March 17, 2025.
Second?
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please? And Tim is online, by the way.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to a discussion, and this is a second reading and adoption. Thank you, gentlemen, by the way. If you'd like to stay and see what the determination is on burying somebody in your backyard, you want it. So, is that, this is not a zoning issue necessarily, is it?
It is a zoning issue.
It is, oh, darn. No, no, no. All right, all right. Okay. All, in all seriousness, this is not a dead issue. All right, because this is the second reading, okay, second reading and adoption by Titleoni of Ordinance Two, Series 2025, entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Imposing a Temporary Moratorium for Six Months in the Duration on the Processing and Approval of Any Application for a Special Use Permit to Allow for a Cemetery and Directing the Study of Whether Private Cemeteries Should Be Permitted Within the City and the Necessity of Use-Specific Regulations. I'd invite the city administrator, if you wish, to comment on that.
I will turn this over to city planner, Mulready.
I appreciate your help in this undertaking.
No problem.
So, you heard, two weeks ago, you heard this as a first reading item. Nothing has changed. We are still considering to, you know, continuing to get inquiries about this. So, with this passing, what we will do, if council adopts it tonight, is reach out to the county coroner, have some conversations about, you know, safe distances, burials from things like, you know, major waterways, major drainage ways, utility lines. So, you know, we can have, you know, discussions about the minimum size for these things and actually put together some standards and come back to council with those.
Any questions of council from Mr. Mulready? What? Okay. None. Well, then, at this time, I'd, pardon? Oh, Gerald.
I was going to make a motion.
Go right ahead. Thank, ask for a motion, a second.
I move that we approve ordinance number two, Series of 2025. I move that, that we approve ordinance number two, Series of 2025.
Hi. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Aye. Well, that concludes our evening session, and we are now adjourned. Thank you all.